Can we plug into that?
Uh, I'm not sure, actually. Actually, I must be able to. Sorry.
Um, yes.
Yeah. Maybe try to charge them. Unless it's a marathon.
Hi, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to a unusual planning and zoning meeting. This is our first one since February. Okay, so Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public comment only on items on the agenda. Presentation by the public is limited to no more than 10 minutes for the spokesperson of a group and no more than three minutes for any individual. As always, additional information may be conveyed to the Planning and Zoning Commission in written form. We do ask today that you keep your mask on at all times. We ask that you remain seated, and if anyone is present for public comment when we open up the floor, if you'll please raise your hand, and then we'll call you up individually. Any other announcement? Okay, let's get started. We'll start by roll call.
Here.
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 Chair Hudson.
Here.
Ms. Pilgore.
Here.
Mr. Edmund.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. All right, so first on our agenda tonight are the approval of the minutes from the March 4th, 2020 meeting. And I believe we have to include findings of fat. Okay, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. First up on our agenda tonight is a conditional zoning. It is a request to conditionally rezone property located at 61 Innovation Drive from commercial industrial to institutional CZ, along with the change in the future land use map from industrial manufacturing to employment anchor institution center. Property is identified, and the owner is FSI Foundation LLC. The contact is Brian Moffett, and the planner coordinating review is Jessica Bernstein.
And I'll be filling in for Jessica this evening. Good evening. My name is Shannon Tuck, Principal Planner with the Planning and Development Department. So as Chair Hudson has indicated, the first item on our agenda this evening is a conditional zoning for the property located at 61 Innovation Drive. This is the property that currently supports the Franklin School of Innovation. So the subject property is outlined here on the Exhibit A zoning map. The property, as indicated on the map, is currently zoned commercial industrial. Most of the city's zoning designations actually allow schools and other community facilities. So this project actually began as a Level 1 project back, I think, in 2015, and has grown in scope. So it started as a Level 1 and then came back in 2018 as a Level 2, all with by right site plan approval. Here you can see the property in its current state. The buildings in white, kind of in the center of the property, is the permanent building. That's the main school building. And some of the smaller gray buildings and the larger buildings, kind of to the south of the L-shaped building, are some of the factory fabricated temporary classrooms that are currently on site, and the main purpose of this conditional zoning this evening. Our ordinance allows school buildings, factory fabricated buildings, to be used for school classrooms, but it limits the duration that those buildings can be used, and that's for a five-year period. Because these buildings were first established in 2015, their five years is running out. So they're here before you this evening to ask for this conditional zoning to allow or to extend the duration of those buildings while they plan for their third and final phase of construction, which will be some building additions on, and I'll come back to that. The building additions you can see on the northern end for the Phase 2. So when those additions are complete, and then it'll have space for the children, and they can remove the factory fabricated buildings. And they anticipate that being completed by before, on or before 2025. So within another five-year time period. I should mention that the five-year duration is a zoning code limitation. It is not a building code limitation. It's not to suggest that the buildings are unsafe, just that it, you know, is not the most desirable learning environment for children. So we attempt to time limit those buildings, the use of those buildings. You can see on the site plan the circulation pattern. You come in through the northern entrance along that western boundary from Sardis Road, and you travel north and you start to reach the different parking areas as you approach different building, school facilities. It's a one-way loop that comes around along the eastern side and then back out to Sardis Road. You can see some internal circulation as well, vehicular and pedestrian. And in a more build-out phase, you can see that those factory fabricated buildings will be replaced with a new soccer field for the school. The conditional zoning and B1 conditions would have approved, again, extend the use of those buildings to 2025. At complete and final build-out, the total square footage will be approximately 78,000 square feet, approximately 140 parking spaces, and the other various school amenities that you see on the site plan. In addition to the building duration exception that is being proposed in the B1 conditions, the only other modification is the number of street trees. There were some Duke utility conflicts with the eight street trees that were required. The school has planted six, and those trees are in place and healthy and are doing well. And there's a variety of landscaping throughout the campus that more than makes up for the two trees that were not included in the street trees. And let me go back to the future land use map. And I apologize, the exhibit that was provided in your packets gives you the legend and the color coding. When I clipped it for this presentation, it clipped it off, so I apologize for that. I realized later. It's currently zoned, or not, excuse me, zoned. It's currently designated industrial manufacturing in the future land use map, which is part of the city's comprehensive plan. Because of that, schools are not really listed as an appropriate use in industrial manufacturing. So we are going to have to change the future land use map in addition to the zoning map. And the most appropriate designation would be employment and anchor institution, which is what most of our big campus or school facilities are currently designated. And that concludes my introduction. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Tuck at this moment?
Condition 10 says the conditional zoning will be valid for a period of two years from the date of approval by City Council. You're not stating that the zoning will revert back in two years.
No, no, it just means that any permits that are necessary would have to be obtained within two years.
Can we get that clarified in that condition?
Sure, yeah. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, I guess we can invite the applicant to the podium.
Hi, Brian Moffett with Arca Design, speaking on behalf of the applicant. And I've done enough of these that I'm not going to tell you anything unless you have any questions.
Pretty straightforward.
That's a smile, by the way. I'm sorry. I will say that we did have eight street trees, but Duke reduced it to six.
What do the conditions say? Seven or six?
Six.
Okay.
No, we had eight planted. They cut them down.
Okay, I see.
Through that right away, they have, I see that's on.
Correct.
Got it. All right, any questions, applicant at all? No? Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and open up for public comment at 5:10. Is there anyone from the public? All right, close public comment at 5:10, and anyone would like to make a motion or discuss?
I'd like to make a motion if we're ready.
Second.
I move to approve the, excuse me, I move to approve the conditional zoning request for the property located at 61 Innovation Drive from commercial industrial to industrial conditional zone with an amendment to the future land use map of the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan from industrial manufacturing to employment anchor institution center, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that, one, the request allows for longer phasing for use of temporary buildings to aid in the uncertain economic time; two, the use is appropriate in the underlying zoning district and is already in operation; three, site improvements such as sidewalk and dedication of a greenway easement provide valuable amenities; and four, the proposed change to the future land use of the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan is a better alignment of the existing use.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, the motion passes unanimously and moves on to City Council for final approval. All right, next on the agenda, we have a couple of wording amendments. And it does look like everything on our agenda tonight does go on to City Council for final approval. Number one, we have a consideration of a proposed zoning text amendment to Chapter 7 of the Unified Development Ordinance, or the UDO, amending Section 7-2-5, the definitions, and establishing a new section, 7-9-1, Resource Management Overlay District, and a new Article 19? Did I get that right? Tree canopy preservation. Planner coordinating review is Chris Collins.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Chris Collins with the Development Services Department. And I've been working with a lot of staff, but also Eric Edgerton from the City Attorney's Office, who's here with us this afternoon, and may answer some questions as well. But as soon as I get used to talking, presenting with this, I'll get my groove on. So I talked to you about the draft ordinance for tree canopy preservation enhancement that we've been working through. First of all, we started this ordinance to further the comprehensive plan goals that are ahead of you right now. That's Sections of Goal 5, 20, 23, and 25, regarding increasing shaded sidewalks and expanding tree canopy, the healthiest expanding urban tree canopy, increasing and enhancing the area of canopy cover, and minimizing the growth of impervious surfaces citywide. In addition to that, there were a couple of studies done recently back before the pandemic in the fall and late summer. NASA developed, had a program that studied the urban heat island effect here in Asheville and the effect of tree canopy on that. And that was one contributing factor to starting the disordnance amendment. And then we also hired a consultant, and the late summer came in the fall with the urban tree canopy study, which quantified the current tree canopy loss the city of Asheville has been experiencing. Based upon all those things and direction from the City Manager's Office and City Council, we started out this process to write an ordinance to address tree canopy preservation. And we've worked through the process with Urban Forestry Commission and a couple of subgroups of that group. They have an ordinance amendment group that's been working with us. The Tree Canopy Task Force also. To, we worked really closely with them to come up with the text and the concepts behind this ordinance. We've also worked with the Development Customer Advisory Group. That is a group that was, that came out of the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Development Task Force many years ago to help development services work with the customers we have, which are contractors, builders, architects, engineers, land developers, all that, to kind of bounce that out, help make sure we're writing something that would be friendly to the development community, as well as achieve our goal of protecting tree canopy. We have presented to the Sustainability Committee, the Planning and Economic Development Committee of the Council, downtown commission, the Chamber of Commerce as well. So we've tried to cover a lot of bases. Some of our engagement has been slowed by the COVID-19 pandemic and the city trying to find its way in online engagement, and we haven't ended up here today. So what this ordinance would do is introduce requirements to preserve existing or install new tree canopy on development projects of certain types. And the projects that that would apply to now would be subdivisions, both major and minor. So it's anything creating a new lot, essentially. Steep slope and aquatic buffer zones, as they currently exist. It's Zone A and Zone B steep slope and aquatic buffers around map streams. Construction of new buildings, construction of new open uses, such as parking lots, and the expansion of buildings by more than 1,500 square feet, or the expansion of open uses, like parking lots by more than 3,000 square feet. This does capture a few things that currently, with our current form of tree regulation, which is a tree save area, that are not captured right now with minor subdivisions and small commercial development. Level 1 developments, our most numerous commercial developments, are the Level 1 commercial developments. And we set the numbers for expansions on buildings in order to not capture, like our current zoning ordinance, we'll take something where someone's just putting investment to the interior of a current building and cause them to have to bring the whole site up to compliance. We didn't really want this tree ordinance to trigger on those folks as an extra burden on those. That's something we heard from some of our stakeholder groups. So what I'll do is I'll take you through how we would apply this ordinance to show you how it works and what the elements are. And the key elements we're going to be working with are the Resource Management Districts, and that's actually going to be an overlay district that's established throughout the city. And that is due to the way our local act is written and how we derive our power to do this. Establishing canopy classifications, and also establishing canopy preservation requirements. And perhaps the most key thing here is this ordinance, you'll see, contains a great deal of flexibility. And that is in order to make this something that's easy to implement, easy to design, and easy to work with. So the first thing we have to do here was establish resource management districts, and I'll blow that up for you. It doesn't help a ton, but that's always how Asheville is. It's this way, so it never fits well on the screen. And we've established three resource management districts. And what we've done is we've based those on the future land use districts from the Living Asheville Plan. We did look at several options, such as zoning districts and things like that, to establish these. But this was the most complimentary of our tree canopy levels throughout the city. When the tree canopy study I referenced earlier was done, it showed where we had the most tree canopy, where we had the least. And these groupings of future land use districts that we did really matched up pretty well with that tree canopy coverage. So that is one reason we went this way with it. It also uses an established boundary that we've already filled out and looked at through the comprehensive plan to describe the areas and how we want them to grow. These are important that we have. We have the downtown Resource Management District, which everyone's familiar with downtown. Those boundaries don't vary greatly by this district at all. Then the urban future land use district, which describes a lot of our more established neighborhoods and things such as that, the commercial corridors outside of downtown. And the suburban future land resource management district. I always like to, when I'm saying this, this is more about the pattern of development, urban versus suburban and things like that. But it does correspond to pretty well with our tree canopy levels throughout the city. And this will be important, because what we're going to do, when you go to apply this ordinance, the first thing that has to be done is you have to figure out what site, what tree canopy requirement classification a site falls with under, and you do that by determining what resource management district the site is in, cross-referencing that with the land use. And you'll see, this is a 17-9, this is a table from the ordinance, so. So this is the first table someone would use to apply or review a site on this, so. In this instance, let's kind of carry aside through here. If we have a commercial site within the suburban Resource Management District, that'd be a Class C. We're going to take that piece of information forward to the next set of tables. We have one table for Classes A and B. That's mostly going to be our downtown and our urban Resource Management District. Class B, those are in one table in the ordinance. We broke them up to show it to you tonight. And then we have two tables covering Class C, which are based on the amount of tree canopy coverage that is already in place on the site. But I'm going to go back to a simple one, just to kind of break these tables down for you. So like I said, flexibility is the key with this ordinance. We started out with the question of, can we prevent trees being cut? Well, we really can't instill have developable sites in the city, because trees may be in the middle of the site, they may be on the edge. It's just, there's no pattern. So the first thing we'll see of this chart, the column to the right is the total tree canopy required. And that is canopy square footage expressed as a percentage of the square footage of the development site. And you'll see that the number grows as we go down. Canopy to the far left is preserved canopy for existing mature tree canopy. And in the middle, that is for new canopy installation, newly installed trees. The thread you'll see through all these tables is, while we can't say you can't cut the trees, what we're going to do with this is try to incentivize preserving the existing trees over planting new trees. So as you move down the table, the total tree canopy requirement increases. So if you are able to preserve trees to meet your full requirement at 5% in Class A, that's all you have to do. If you have no trees to start with on your site, or if you have chosen to cut them all down, your requirement is now 10% for total tree canopy area. So that's part of an incentive you'll see through all these tables. We'd like to see people keep mature tree canopy, but we know the options have to exist. And it's not an all or nothing. As you'll see, you can mix it up. You can preserve three, plant four, but the ratio does go up as you reduce the amount of canopy you preserve. And the same holds true. As you get to Class B, our numbers increase a little, higher preservation requirements. And you get to Class C, the requirements are the highest for the already most forested sites, and they get a little less as we get to sites with less canopy existing. So this slide just basically illustrates that whole incentive to preserve over plant. Green is your preserve existing canopy, while blue is plant new tree canopy requirements. So as you plant more, as you reduce your existing canopy or don't have existing canopy, you plant more trees. So how do we establish what canopy credits you are getting for existing trees? Well, that comes to Table 1719-194, which tells us what canopy credit you get for existing trees. The size classifications come from the city's preferred species list, which we've been, the Urban Forestry Commission has been working on updating this whole time as well to make sure it's ready to go. So the max for a large tree over 10 inches, right now, you could get 1,600 square feet of tree canopy credit to preserve it. And then it goes down, of course. You have, it's based on the DBH diameter, best height, the width of the tree, and then the classification of the tree in that preferred species list. Table to the right, 1719-195, continues the thread of incentivizing preserving existing trees over planting new, because you do get about a third of the credit for a new tree that you do for an existing tree. That's roughly. So we would use those numbers. So all I want to do is I'll take you through this. These are some graphics that David Hazard with the Playing Urban Design Department did for us. So they do a really good job exhibiting how this would work. And I'll just go in and point out that, like, when I ran through this presentation today, it was the first time I realized the three and the four got mixed up on one acre, so. Probably nobody would have noticed if I hadn't said anything, right? So this is a site within the suburban Resource Management District. It's a fictitious site, right? With 35% existing tree canopy, and someone's looking to install a commercial use. So here are your existing conditions. You see in the light blue, just the site, and in the dark, light green. In the dark green, your existing tree canopy, at 35% of the site. This example would be if they use full canopy preservation to meet the requirements. So if they did not cut down, they met that full 15% requirement without adding any new trees. You can see up in the top right, the darker green shows the 15% required preserved tree canopy. An important thing to note as we move through this is the trees that are already required by the Unified Development Ordinance, such as building impact landscape, building impact landscaping, parking lot landscaping, street trees, those are still going to be required. So this will kind of illustrate, you'll see highlighted in red, all those trees are already required by the UDO right now. So the preserved canopy in the top right there is in addition to the trees that are already required to be installed.
Do the new trees that are required throughout, street trees, parking lot trees, do they count toward your canopy credits?
They only will count under, if you're preserving existing trees to meet those requirements. So in some instances, someone will bring forward a site, and there are situations where your trees can be in close enough proximity to a parking space or something like that, that you can count it towards that. Most of what we see with parking lot and building impact is newly planted landscaping, because generally they have to clear an area to put a parking lot or a building. But in the instance where they can count a tree for that, it would count towards the canopy. Yes?
I was reading the wording, the wording change earlier. And one of the things that I wasn't quite clear, I'm really glad to see that we're using tree canopy coverage as opposed to just number of trees or DBH. But one of the things that concerns me is, for example, in this sort of fictitious example, is there, how is the condition of the individual tree canopy looked at? Because as an urban forester, I can look and see if a tree has, the condition of a tree is often expressed by the density of the canopy. So if the developer is using, for example, you know, a larger site, an overhead shot, and it's noting that it's a dense canopy. But if you go onto the site and look up, and you can see openings within an individual canopy, the tree, which is a symptom of a tree under stress or a tree that is in decline. Is there any provision to look at the condition of individual tree as opposed to just one mass canopy that is, you know, towed out? So will there be sort of an onsite inspection by one of our staff to be able to go and say, wait a minute, this whole line of trees here is under stress? They're, you know, before they're under stress, and then after, after construction, there might be extensive root damage. How are we accounting for that? That potential lessening of the tree canopy after the site plan has been approved and after construction?
Sure, let me answer part of that right now and then go through the rest and answer that. Because, so, first off, I'll just say there are two options in the ordinance for measurement of the site. For larger sites, it does allow for some aerial measurement. For smaller sites, it does require individual tree surveys. So that part is there. And you'll hear about it in a second, but we do have, we're introducing a new concept of a tree removal permit, not for every place in the city, but for places where tree canopy protection has been established through a development plan. And if you come in for a tree removal permit, it's basically has to be supported by a statement by a certified arborist, and it does require replacement of that tree upon approval. So that's kind of, we're not looking at a certification right up front of the trees, but as they do come out or something goes wrong, they are required to be removed by permit only and then replaced.
And will there be, look, after development, will there be a follow-up so that you can see if there are trees that have been impacted by the development?
Sure. I mean, there are inspections that are ongoing through the whole time, and part of this is introducing, well, we have some standards and details for tree protection now, but introducing a better standard for tree protection fencing and perimeter. And currently, we, just in the, you know, getting ahead of it, the way this will be implemented, our site and grading inspectors, who go visit the site every two weeks right now, will be adding this to their checklist of what they look at.
Thank you.
Okay.
I guess my question to you is this. I didn't quite understand. If there's in the section that deals with tree removal permits for dead, diseased, dying trees that are already there, are they, if you remove a dead or dying tree, is that going to count against you in the preservation figures?
If you remove it during construction activity?
During construction. It's already dead and dying. During construction, it's already dead and dying, it's not part of a canopy, I wouldn't.
Right, so, I'll tell you, let me, the best thing might be to be, let me continue through the presentation and get you guys the whole ordinance picture, and then I'll make sure and address that, if that's okay, all right? All right, next scenario here would be parcel tree canopy preservation, same site, suburban resource management district, 35% existing canopy, commercial use, this time issue is a one-story building, so we have a bigger footprint. And you'll see highlighted in red, everything that would be required by the UDO now. In addition to 9.3% of the site being preserved. And then where you see NC up there would be new canopy trees. So basically, everything above the red circled trees is added by this ordinance. And then no canopy preservation, meaning they cut everything down, they're going to replant it or whatever, then again, everything in red, once again, UDO required, and then all the new canopy planted up top. Okay, so talk about options, once again, and keeping this ordinance flexible so that it is implementable. We're also introducing a concept of payment in lieu of tree planting. And this slide right here shows you that is only available for the new tree canopy installation requirement. You can't come and be like, I was going to preserve 3% of the trees, but I didn't, so I'm going to pay for that. You've got to work out that new canopy installation number. And on the payment in lieu of planting, here's an example site that we did a calculation for. The fees on that are based on three things, the average cost of land in the resource management district per square foot, the administrative cost of running a program of, of running this fee in lieu, managing the funds, and then the average cost of tree planting broken down per square foot of tree canopy. So right now, we're looking at a site that is downtown, so it's a multifamily office building on roughly half an acre land. You'll see in Table 719, too, there are other requirements, it's downtown, so it's Class A. So if they preserve everything, they need to hold on to 1,100 square feet of tree canopy. If they don't have any trees, or if they're not preserving anything, they need to put in 2,200 square feet of tree canopy.
So I'm sorry, would you repeat that? If you have a piece of land that doesn't have currently much tree canopy, your only, the metric is based on what you're starting with, correct? Not the potential?
The metric is based on, so the whole thing is measured as a percentage of site area.
Site area, so you're starting to add lots of planting to, to a parcel that might be very much?
Can be, yep.
Okay.
So if you're starting, if you're starting at zero, then you'd need 2,200 square feet of tree canopy to comply. Just to put that in perspective, that, let me flip back real quick to this guy. That could be done roughly planting four large trees. Or they could plant that, hold on, let me get back there. So they could plant some trees or whatnot. In this case, this example shows them preserving 1,200 square feet of tree canopy and paying for 1,000 square feet of installation. And that shows you downtown, so the fee in lieu downtown is a large number because the average cost of land per square foot is a very large number downtown. So you'll see at that site, we're in our urban district or suburban, these numbers do go down a little. But this gives a flexible option there, possibly not the most attractive option because it's expensive. But it is there, you can preserve, plant, or pay to meet the requirement.
So if you had a downtown parcel, where sometimes if you look at the typical typology downtown, we have, the only tree required might be a street tree. So a downtown parcel, building almost to the lot lines, would then be required to either plant 10% new trees on somewhere on their lot, or pay this fee?
Right, or some combination of the two. All right, and the details, just some highlights of the idea of the payment in lieu of. The funds will need to be spent in the resource management district where they're collected. In that example, it was in the downtown resource management district. The funds need to be spent within that same resource manager district. And the funds need to be tied to installation, administration, and maintenance of the trees, city's tree canopy. And in implementing this through policy, it's probably an opportunity for equitable maintenance and distribution of tree canopy throughout the city. Because the funds do have to be used to maintain and increase canopy, so we have an opportunity to figure out where those go. All right, so that's actually the same thing, I just showed you the static version, so we're going to pass over that. But general highlights of this, of the, of the ordinance is that, like we talked about before, it allows trees that are being preserved for other UDO requirements to be used to meet the canopy requirement. So again, if you're preserving a tree that meets the requirements to be able to be used as parking lot landscaping or a street tree, then it will count. It does replace ground-based tree save requirements, which is good because not taking a ground-based approach reduces conflicts with things that use areas such as open space, setbacks, and things of that nature. It does require permits for future removal of trees in the tree canopy preservation areas. And we talked about it does allow for multiple methods of calculating existing canopy, because some sites are larger, some are smaller, we don't want to make it too much of a burden. Incentivize, it does, and as we said, there's that thread of incentivizing preservation over replanting with things like measurement flexibility and lower total canopy requirements for planting. And multiple methods of compliance are available, so we don't really anticipate a lot of variance requests from this ordinance because you can plant, you can preserve, or you can pay to meet the requirement. As, there are a few associated changes that are in the ordinance that went out to you, I just want to highlight those. One of those, we, we heard from the downtown commission to his process, there was some concern about street tree maintenance and street trees living and being okay. So we're introducing a requirement for developers to maintain street trees for a period of two, two years after the CO. And then also to Section 712, we're introducing changes to disallow mass grading, which includes mass tree removal, without an approved development plan. Because if that provision's there, someone really has the opportunity to come in and clear a site before they come in for development, and that'd be.
So this is maintaining, maintaining trees in the public right of way?
The street tree provision is yes, trees that are put in by a private developer in the public right of way, as part of a UDO requirement.
Is there any process for certification of the installation? Or is the burden just put on the contractor?
We do have standard details that need to be followed, but that's, that's where it ends right now.
I know I've spoken with a couple of folks at the city and elsewhere about the process. I'm both a landscape architect and a civil engineer. And when utilities such as water and sewer are installed, I'm required to sign and seal that they've been installed in accordance with the specifications that they were required by. And I think it would make a lot of sense for vegetation to have that same sort of certification, especially trees. Where the landscape architect or whomever specified that tree is responsible at the end of the job for submitting some sort of form that says this has been installed in accordance with the, because I've seen plenty of tree pits that have been backfilled with ABC.
Right.
And, and I'll give you an example, the hotel over on Haywood Street, whichever direction that is. Those were, those weren't backfilled with soil, they were a mix of ABC and, you know, clay.
For the, ABC's gravel.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry, gravel, road bond. And you can see that those trees, you know, they've been there that now for maybe four years, five years. They're never going to, they're never going to thrive.
Yeah.
So there needs to be some, some way, and two years later, they may still look okay, they're hanging on, but the reality is, is they'll never thrive. They'll never be what the people who have invested their time in this process want.
Right, that's, that's an excellent point, I appreciate you bringing it up. Well, we've, we've encountered that question previously about inspecting that planting process, and we've heard from our, our Public Works Department that we don't really have the staff to get out there and inspect every one of them. Maybe a certification process would work, and that's something we can look at. Yes?
I'd like to follow up on what you were talking about. Was there any attempt to, maybe, this is not the right word, but are there any changes to the, the planting details that are existing? Because the ones that I've seen are kind of, often a little bit minimal, or maybe just not substantial enough to, to allow for proper tree growth, especially in urban areas?
We are, we are looking at the details there in the standard details, standard details and specifications manual, with the intention of improving those. That is a process outside of the UDO amendment, but we do plan on having those updated prior to this ordinance's implementation.
Because a lot of, you know, well, it, it makes sense that you, you want to plant a tree in a proper way. And right, right now, what I've seen in the past is that the, the, those details can really be improved.
Yeah.
For proper tree growth and, you know.
I think currently our plan is to work directly with the Urban Forestry Commission on having them review these details as we draw them up, so that we can get those in good shape.
Thank you.
All right, last slide, we are planning on a feedback cycle, which means eight to 12 months. We want to take a look at this, see how it's working, what's working, what's not working, what changes need to be made. You know, evaluate the ordinance effectiveness, what are we running into that's causing problems for regulation or development or whatever? And incorporate new recommendations, so we're already getting new recommendations kind of late in the cycle now that we're like, that would have been good, but we just want to leave everybody with the open-ended thing that we are going to come back and look at this and are listening to more recommendations as they come forward. For instance, we've already, we've been in conversations with UFC about incorporating new recommendations for, such as like higher tree canopy credit for heritage trees, or, you know, special or very large specimen trees. But we just didn't feel we've had the time to properly include that in the ordinance yet, so. And that's just one of the many suggestions we're hearing so far.
I have a couple of questions. I mean, this is, it's a really interesting idea, and I appreciate this idea of, you know, identifying and preserving tree canopy. But at the same time, there are some like equally important competing priorities. And I'm wondering how you've looked at those, things like density, sustainability, and affordability? Is, I could imagine a point system where sometimes we're prioritizing canopy in, in certain instances over maybe some of these other goals. And it just makes a project much more expensive if they choose to pay their fee in lieu, which then makes it much less affordable. And I'm wondering if there's a way that if you are working in with affordable or, or certain levels of density, that you could take a look at that comprehensively with the canopy as well? I think it would also be important, I think for, for me, one of the, your examples are these perfect rectangles on flat sites, and they're really hard to come by in Asheville. So, you know, looking at those, a lot of times you eat up every little bit of your site, just trying to get the parking minimums in. And I would suggest looking at this canopy study as a way of also looking at parking minimums. And if you're providing more trees, maybe you get a reduction in your parking count as a way to offset, so that you're saying, we're going to prioritize canopy over parking. And, I mean, because sometimes you're going to come to the point where you really, you don't, you know, one's pushing the other. And so I think I would like to see some flexibility in, in that way as well. And I do, have you considered, does this prioritize, or not prioritize, but does this penalize small developers? So a smaller lot is going to have a lot of, a lot harder time meeting setbacks, building code requirements, parking requirements, and the existing tree requirements now on top of canopy. I mean, a large developer on a large parcel, they have, they can shift things around no problem. But, you know, is there a way to look at, when you're looking at your chart, could you consider parcel size? You know, as, as a component of, of, of that as well? And, and I just find it hard to believe that downtown, where we're building lot line to lot line, buildings up against each other, and we do have street trees, and it's a typology, and there's a benefit to that because it's a limited amount, and I understand we do need some canopy downtown. But should that be the purview of the city, creating parklets and aggregating open space in that way, rather than making each developer in the, I mean, are these just things we've considered? How it affects specifically, like, the densest part of downtown?
Yes, so we, we did consider, and where we landed was the lower requirement for downtown sites. We had versions of the ordinance that maybe didn't require preservation downtown, but that didn't necessarily seem, that wasn't really supportable up through this point. The other point being the fee in lieu funds staying within the resource management district where we're working does allow for that opportunity for the city to provide canopy in more appropriate position, places.
But they're very expensive downtown.
They are very expensive, yeah.
And so, you know, okay.
So that's kind of how we've approached it so far, is reducing that total requirement downtown. By nature of the, you know, the, the site area being, the tree canopy percentage being a percentage of the site area, you do get less canopy required for a smaller site. But, yeah, smaller sites are always more difficult to develop because you don't have as much room to shift things around. We have not really looked at cross-pollinating like incentives, like parking and, and, you know, being, you know, planners were very cognizant of the fact we're increasing the cost of development. In some cases, it could affect the cost of the housing product or whatever that goes there, but we, we don't have any mechanisms built in for that at this time.
I'm still, what Laura said about a small lot in the city is going to have a very expensive fee in lieu, is it not? If you can't put a, if you can't meet this tree canopy requirement?
That is, that is one outcome, yeah, if you can't plant or preserve.
A lot that you have to really do build and just put street trees out there, and see how you can do it. And then the other question, I went back to you, if you have a dead, dying, or unsafe tree as spelled forth, and you take that down, which seems prudent to do, are you going to be penalized and have to come back and replace a dead tree that should have been removed anyway?
So if you're working on a smaller site, I believe the ordinance identifies them two acres or less, you're actually doing a survey of the trees there that you're counting for canopy. So if you have a tree during development process, your due diligence process that is dead or dying in poor shape, you're not likely going to count that as your canopy credit. Because if that did get injured or come down during development process, we would have to replace that or count another tree or amend the plan in some way before you finalize the development, so.
So you do have to replace a dead or dying tree with a new tree?
If you've identified it on your plan as a canopy requirement meeting tree, yeah, you would need to either replace it or identify another tree on site, or some way make up that difference.
So only if you count it?
Right, if you counted it as qualifying for that required tree canopy, then.
But if you don't count it?
Then it's not required by, it's not, we, the UDO section we're looking at here is not requiring that tree to be there, so.
I would like to go back to the speculative grading.
Yeah.
Last slide, that, the only thing I would like to make sure is that properties under present use value would not come under this requirement.
You mentioned that earlier, I think you were referring to like agricultural operations.
Or forest.
So I don't feel like, I don't, I haven't done the research to fully answer that question tonight, but anything that is exempt from designing authority through bona fide agricultural operations or anything like that, that would, would also probably not be applicable to this. I don't know if Eric, if you have any, yeah. So, I mean, if it's already exempt from zoning, it's going to be exempt from this as well.
I have a couple of comments. One, I would kind of like to reiterate what Ms. Hudson said as far as like the affordable housing piece of this. And to me, that's, that would be a big one of trying to find some way to do a point system. And, and I would think the best way to do that, maybe not the best way, maybe one of the easiest ways to do it would be, is if they are asking for a Luigi or some other, you know, direct assistance from the city, obviously, you know, for that. So I think that would be something to kind of put on that front radar of getting, getting that worked in as soon as possible. The other question I have is, so who, you know, if, if a developer does a fee in lieu, and they pay all those fees, and there is an identified place to put new trees, who's doing the planting of the trees? I mean, is, is that work falling on the city? Is this, is the fee in lieu idea that we're, the city is going to pay someone to do that? Like, where, how does that?
Yeah.
How's that going to work?
And so we potentially left that kind of broad in the ordinance, so as not to box it in so much. But the thoughts are, there are, there are partnerships that could happen, there are outside organizations that you could give grants to from this money to plant trees in the city. in the city. There are direct plantings in city parks we could do ourselves as a city. There's maintenance of existing street trees downtown and tree stands downtown that can be used for. We really want to leave the options open and not code those in through the ordinance, but that's kind of the thought right now.
I was, I even heard Mr. Houser say green works. I was just curious, because I'm thinking if it, if the idea is that the city is taking that burden, that maybe is a huge burden right now.
Not, not fully. I think the idea would be to partner with outside agencies for new plantings and let them manage that. And things that happen on our own sites, on parks, possibly manage that. But there are a lot of different departments and moving pieces in that. But the plan is definitely not for the city to take on the whole burden of planting all those trees.
Any other questions for Mr. Collins at this time?
I would just make a couple of additional observations. One, you mentioned the tree survey. That's an additional cost to a developer over and above what they would normally get, probably, depending on the site, of course. The line item for maintenance for two years, I mean, typically on the plans that I prepare, planting plans, I require the contractor or the owner to, no, excuse me, the contractor to provide a one-year maintenance period. I know some landscape architects require two. But I would estimate for a two-year planting period, depending on the number of plants, really, you're talking about somewhere between another $6,000 and $10,000 for that maintenance, because somebody's got to come out there once a week and water the tree or whatever. So it's just a further increase in the cost of development. And of course, the items that Ms. Hudson referred to in downtown sites, as well as sites that I've worked on recently, where, you know, it was a building that had been sitting vacant for three, three years, and as a result, they had to bring the full site into compliance. So they had an enormous planting budget to deal with in order to bring it into compliance. Now, and it looked like a forest at the end of the design, you know, and now we're adding more trees to it. And I'm not opposed to canopy trees, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying that there's a, there's a large cost associated with this, and it's not helping making Asheville a more affordable place to live.
Sure. And if I could answer, offer a comment to one of those. One of the things we did do intentionally is give this section its own applica, give this ordinance, this section of the ordinance its own applicability provisions, so that if you're occupying a space that's been vacant, and you have to come into compliance with other zoning requirements, you would not have to come into compliance with the street canopy preservation. You would have to be putting up a new building or expanding by more than 1,500 square feet, or new parking lot, or expanding an existing parking lot. So it doesn't help us, street trees and things like that will still play into that scenario.
Right.
The new tree canopy provisions would not play into that.
Okay.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. We'll call you up if we have more questions. Is there anyone else from the city who needs to present, or are we ready to open for public comment? Okay, so we'll open for public comment at 5:53. Is there anyone here?
Hi.
I'm Sharon.
Sharon, come on up to the microphone. And please state your, your name for the record.
Well, I've never talked through the mask. Can you hear me?
New experience.
A very new experience. Hi, I'm Sharon. I'm on the Urban Forestry Commission. I'm also the appointee to the Technical Review Committee for the UFC. And I'm going to read, I don't know how many minutes I have, but I'm going to read what was prepared on this. And if I have more time, I would like to respond to some of the questions. I was also part of the subcommittee that helped work on this draft with Chris. So, the Urban Forestry Commission Working Group thanks Mr. Ben Woody, Director of Development Services, Chris Collins, Deputy Director of Development Services, Eric Egerton, Assistant City Attorney, Nancy Watford, Stormwater Supervisor, and other staff in the Department of Development Services for working with us on developing the Tree Protection Amendment, Section 719-1. At its February 2020 meeting, the Urban Forestry Commission voted to approve the Tree Protection Amendment, noting, however, that the proposed ordinance change does not address zero net loss, canopy loss, a major goal of the commission. The Urban Forestry Commission position has not changed. The Urban Forestry Commission acknowledges that this ordinance amendment is the first step toward a more reasoned approach to balancing the need for development with the need for protecting our urban forests, and ultimately slowing the alarming loss of the city's tree canopy. The Urban Forestry Commission, working alongside Development Services, plans to advance a zero net tree canopy loss policy to the City Council for consideration and approval. Therefore, the Urban Forestry Commission urges the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the Tree Protection Amendment, and that it recommends approval to the City Council. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would care to speak?
Yes.
Okay, then, I think.
Yes.
Well, we generally don't open up for question and answer with the public. But, I mean, any questions, we could bring Mr. Collins back up. So I'm going to close public comment at 5:56. And if you, we can bring the city back up to answer questions. Mr. Collins, why don't you come on up? We probably will have a few more for you.
No, 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 I didn't want to ask her a question. She said, if I had a few minutes, I'd like to answer some of your questions that they asked.
Well, I'm just going to respond, and I think I'm only allowed three minutes.
Yes, that's right.
Well, I mean, as, as a function of the city, can she respond as, on behalf of, I mean, how does this work? I feel like we're in a little prior here.
I'm not clear on the question.
I guess, I mean, is it okay if we bring her up to answer some questions as if she were speaking on behalf of the city?
Well, no, I think if you have questions about the ordinance.
We should direct it, keep it, okay.
But if you have questions about Mr. Ross's experience.
Working with the stakeholder group or something along those lines, then I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. I'm okay with that. So if we, I mean, we'll limit it to, you stay up there too.
Okay.
But, I'm sorry, you're not leaving. But we'll go ahead and make a little bit of that. So, so she's not answering on behalf of the city, but as a part of the Urban Forestry Commission.
Commission and a part of the task force. I just wanted to say that all your questions, we spent a considerable amount of time, us that were on the task force, and every question that you brought up, we brought up and talked about and hashed it over. We're all, we've got, I'm a landscape contractor, we have an urban forester, we have people that have been very experienced on this, and then working with the city. It was a laborious process, and it's, everything that you brought up, we'd hashed over. And in the details of the report, a lot of your questions will work out. But what started this whole thing for us was the, especially in the downtown, was the alarming NASA study about the urban heat canopy. So we looked at downtown really closely, realizing that it was going to be impactful, but we had to do something. As I said, on the TRC, we get a lot of developments that don't require anything but a poor sad tree on the street. So we made silver cells, requirements and different things that will require better maintenance of trees as opposed to sticking them in the ground and pray they live kind of situation. So everything you mentioned, we hashed out plenty of hours. So it was good to hear.
George, did that kind of address what I was asking earlier about the details, the planting details, silver cells and?
Yes.
You know, current best practices for tree planting?
Yes, we worked with ANSI standards on pruning, best practices, more downtown silver cells. We're looking at MSD with sewer line and requirements for trees and easements. And we analyzed just about everything, pretty well beat it to death. So, but there's room for more input, of course. But we looked at all angles at that, because we've been working on it for a long time. A year, maybe?
Quite, a long time.
Feels like two.
So did you all come up with any kind of solutions to deal with the affordable issue, affordability issue for the developers?
Um, no, it's, it's like, I don't know, it comes to a philosophical point of, of what do you want your downtown in your city to look like as we as Asheville? You know, do we want to take everything out? And is there room for us to develop as well as keep our green infrastructure? I mean, it's like, at affordable housing, we should also have trees. And so there's a balance in there as opposed to not having any trees and just having setback to setback of building. So there, there's a balance in there, as opposed to denuding everything and just having apartments and as it's set up now. So it's design. It's, it's like, it's what smart cities are doing now, different other cities that are doing for affordable housing, as well as green infrastructure. It's a balance. I mean, it's kind of vague, but it's, it's what other cities are also doing to, to balance the two for development.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Collins, in prioritizing canopy, did you look at the effect of green roofs in maybe downtown as trade-off?
We had some conversations about green roofs, and mostly since we're looking at canopy, we didn't do any kind of equivalency for a green roof to, to get that canopy effect. Obviously, we can't really do canopy trees on a green roof necessarily. So that's about as far as we took it with that conversation, that we couldn't really get the canopy trees up there. But we did not explore any kind of equivalency for a green roof.
I mean, I understand, I mean, I understand there's not a true equivalence between a green roof and trees. But, I mean, if you're talking about heat island effect or certain things, I mean, there, I think there are other ways to achieve that as well, that maybe should be explored and included, especially in, in our densest areas. Yeah. Are there any other thoughts?
I keep asking about these tree removals, but in the section, you've got fees for tree removal. So I don't know what that is. It says established and listed in the current fee manual, which I don't know if that was what you put up there. But a person's going to have to, before he can take down a dead tree, he's going to have to pay a fee, he's going to have to bring a certified arborist out there to cut down that, or to say that that tree is dead, and then he's going to have to pay somebody to cut the tree down. Is that the case?
So if that tree was identified on the plan as a tree being used for this canopy requirement, then yes. I believe the fee we've established for tree removal permit is like a minimal permit fee, $100 fee. But not, again, this is not just talking every tree on the site, or a tree on like a single family homeowner's site or anything like that. This is just trees that are identified as meeting this requirement.
So does he have to get a separate permit for every tree he's cutting down?
Not likely so. We could probably identify numerous under one permit. But again, that's kind of the administrative provisions that we've worked through. But we wouldn't look to make that more burdensome than it needs to be.
I mean, I would imagine the hope would be a developer, if they saw a dead tree, they wouldn't count it.
Right.
Like, and thus wouldn't end up incurring the fee, is my, is what I'm understanding from you, Mr. Collins.
Right, because it's.
Yeah.
That's like one of the things that needs to be worked out.
Yeah. I, I think the idea of looking at green roofs would also be a good idea, because again, it is about that heat island effect, for sure. I just, I have a question. Was the Affordable Housing Coalition, were they, excuse me, the committee, were they asked about the idea of the affordability versus fee and lieu and trees, especially downtown? I mean, were they looped in at all?
They, they weren't on our circuit somehow, yeah.
So personally, if we're starting to talk about debating this and thinking about making a motion, I really like this idea of finding a way to preserve our urban forest and our tree canopy. And I will fully support that. I think I don't support it yet, not in this form. I think that there needs to be more consideration made for affordability and for density, as a way, there may be some exchange, so that we're, we're not purely prioritizing. I mean, these are all important needs. And I would like to see, also parking, that's, trade trees for parking, happily. But, you know, if you jam too many requirements onto one small parcel, I, I think you're going to find some things you just, you'll kill the development altogether. And, and, and not that we want great big developments without trees, I'm just saying that we want quality developments. And to balancing those priorities, and I do think the affordable housing community needs to be involved. And so maybe when you come back around, it'll be, you know, something I'd definitely get behind.
Okay.
I hesitate to ask the question, but I mean, is it possible that, let's see, so this still needs to go to council? Is the, is the idea that it would go to council, what, next two weeks?
In August.
In August.
Right now is what we're projecting, yeah.
I, I mean, I think it's great. I appreciate all the work the Urban Forestry Commission has done, and certainly everybody else. I mean, I think this is, this is really good. I do think that there need to be those considerations that Ms. Hudson's talking about. But I, I'm struggling with delaying this any further, because I think this needs to get in, you know, as soon as possible. Is there some way that we could say that in three months we could have something like that? Like, start getting, you know, you mentioned that there's already comments coming in. Is there some way that, that we can get it, that those would be, and again, I realize that, you know, you're talking about amending it every single time, but can we get it kind of fast-tracked on some of these other ones, that it's not like, oh, we're going to wait, we're going to kind of look at it for eight months, and then next year we deal with, like, adding that in, like?
Well, it doesn't have to be delayed that long. I mean, I think it's well-intentioned, and it's just not, it's, to me, it's not fleshed out enough to move on to council. Otherwise, I mean, there are times, you're right, we say, please make a few tweaks. I think they need to, to.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, I'm really tired. I want to see it happen soon, but it's like, yeah, I want those tweaks to happen soon.
Well, I think there's an impassioned community that does really, you know, support and care and is driving some of this forward. And I mean, we don't want them to feel discouraged that it's.
Exactly. And it's also a problem with, it's in front of affordable housing, because I don't even know if they're meeting tomorrow or not. Like, they're, yeah, everything's up in the air right now, so.
Are you suggesting tabling this or continuing it, or what is your?
Well, that depends on what we want to do. We can make us, I mean, also, the city, if you'd rather us just take a vote, we could, because, I mean, honestly, it goes to city council. And so we can just, but they might find that if it doesn't have a lot of support, maybe it requires a little more fine-tuning before going to council.
You bring up some valid points, especially as it relates to affordability. And I think that's an important thing. I know city council is working on a lot of bigger projects right now. And I don't know if they will dive into it in the depth of what we are in their overall scheme of things they have to do.
So, I mean, that's our work, is this commission. So, anyways, does anyone care to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, but I don't have the wording in front of me, if I can borrow it.
If someone's going to make a motion, there, some of the articles were not written in the sample motion, so let me give you one.
Thank you.
I've got new wording coming, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. So I should cite these?
2012, I think that is. That's the Roman numeral.
Okay.
And it's not six.
Okay. Don't mention that.
Yes, articles I thought I meant.
All right, let's see if I can do this right. I move to approve the proposed wording amendments to Articles 2, 9, 11, 12, and add a new 19. And of the UDO, and to add a new Article 19 to the UDO.
X1X, 19.
That's new 19, okay. And finally, the proposed amendments are consistent with the city's comprehensive plan in that one. in that one, the amendment stresses tree preservation and planting requirements while increasing the types of projects that are required to comply. And two, the amendment uses multiple methods of compliance to achieve the goal of increased tree canopy preservation, thereby remaining usable and amicable to the development community. And number three, the amendment provides funding for enhancing tree canopy across the city as a whole through fee and lieu of option, thereby allowing for an equitable distribution of tree canopy across the city.
Is there a second? Okay, without a second, we'll have to have a motion to deny. I mean, is the city okay with that or would the city prefer to move on?
I mean, it can still move to city council.
Exactly.
It just doesn't have our approval or denial. It would just be a.
No, but tabling doesn't move it forward, correct?
Correct.
So that would be to me, a decision that the city would have to make. Oh, sure, absolutely.
Actually, I'm just reviewing the process. So if it's a negative, then the petitioner, which in this case is the city, could ask that if it hasn't been decided upon by the P and Z within 30 days, it just moves on to council. So it's not always that it's negative here and then it moves on to council. It's supposed to, if it's a no here, you could have it come back. We typically, you just table it and it comes back to you rather than having a negative motion.
Well, don't we usually give the petitioner that that option? Sometimes they're like, I'd rather take, go to council.
They'd go ahead. And which is what you were just asking.
Right.
If they wanted to go on.
But if we deny it, it's not the same as if somebody comes in in a private project and we deny it and they can't move it on again. This, they can bring this up as many times as they want if it's the city?
It's only at council, I think, if they're denied that they can't come back.
Yeah, I thought we've had people in the past that we talked about if we denied them for their, you know, they were finished. That's the reason why people would ask for continuances.
Oh, that would be like a level two or something with the last stop.
Okay.
Not that when it went on to council. But the process is, the way it's written now is that it's a negative recommendation. The petitioner may, within 30 days, request that a public hearing be held by the city council.
Love for saying that they can see the council.
So just to confirm, Ms. Ashley, you're saying that if we either voted to deny it or didn't vote at all, that the city could wait 30 days and then take it?
But now I sound another part. We go have this very often where it says, but if it's initiated by the city and there's a negative recommendation, there's not that appeals, that's called like an appeals process where you've sort of asked for it within 30 days to just go straight to council. So I guess in this case, you would say negative or voting for it or table it and it will go on to council whichever way, with your negative recommendation.
Okay.
The answer from the staff side of things, we have, there's some urgency to get this in front of council. As I understand, we're a staff happy to entertain the things that.
Sure, sure. But you are, you want us to go ahead and take our vote and, okay.
I think, I think that's probably the best right now. And we could even work on some of these ideas on its way to council if that's something that's reasonable.
Absolutely. So then I am going to go ahead and then try this. I'm going to make a motion to deny. I move to deny the proposed wording amendments to Articles 2 and 7 of the UDO.
Sorry, there's more articles. You'll have to get the one from. I put them in regular numerals. Just follow the ones below.
I move to deny the proposed wording amendments to Articles 2, 9, 11, 12. And deny adding the new Article 19 to the UDO and find that the proposed amendments are not consistent with the city's comprehensive plan in that they don't take, they do not take into consideration the needs for density and affordable housing and balance the tree canopy requirements with other requirements in the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to deny. All those in favor, and please raise your hand as you say aye. Aye? Did you get that? How many? Okay, and all those opposed?
Nay.
One.
Am I allowed to just not vote?
No.
All right, you can add me for the approve on the denial.
So you're, so you're, okay, so that's six to one.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is denied, six to one.
Yeah.
Okay. That was confusing. Okay. And again, we'll, we may see it again. We'll see, so.
Yeah, I would love it if you guys go to council next month with something about affordable housing. Hey, I'll be right there. Like, yeah.
Excellent.
Love the rest of it.
Okay, we have another wording amendment. It's this time a consideration of updates to the proposed zoning text amendment to Chapter 7 of the UDO, amending Section 7114 Open Space and the planner coordinating review is Vidila Sawtika.
Hi, my name is Vidila Sawtika, planning in urban design. So we came to you and presented this open space update in February and you approved it unanimously. Since that time, the whole COVID thing happened and we've had more time and the Urban Forestry Commission has wanted to weigh in. And so we thought, since we have this time, that we should come back here or that we wanted to work with them to try to meet their, their comments that they didn't get to us earlier. And so that's why we're here again. So my thought was to just go through, if you're fine with this approach, the proposed changes, there are 15 and I've highlighted them here. So I think we can just talk through them. I have the presentation that I can also go through if you need some reminding. But I can do this first, so just wanted to get your sense of how you want me to proceed. I was thinking of just going through these highlighted 15 sections and tell you what we decided to change to meet some of their comments.
Could you just give maybe the briefest 30 second overview of the open space ordinance?
Yes.
And then highlight these changes. So we'll be ready to zoom with you.
Right, so we have the open space regulations for certain sizes of development where you need to provide a certain amount of open space. And we realized after passing the infill housing updates in 2015 that some of our open space standards conflict seriously. And so we have developments that aren't huge. They're two, three story developments. They're not able to, to complete their development because the open space requirements are so onerous. So because of that, and we think that some of our open space standards fail to really provide a good public realm, we thought this was an appropriate time to make some updates. So we, we made, let's see, these updates. And I can kind of summarize them here really quickly. Some of the proposed, the proposed changes, rather than a square footage per unit, which really impacts small developments, we sort of tiered it so that smaller projects have less open space required. We made an incentive for all projects that if they create really good open space, they can bring down that the amount of open space to only 5% because we think that high quality open space is better than providing a lot of open space that isn't very effective. And, and we can still have lots of trees on these sites. And I, you know, included this slide, I may just go into presentation mode, to highlight that small spaces can really be effective and can really be attractive and can, and create good social spaces. I guess I'll just go through the slideshow quickly if there, since it's been five months.
Yeah.
So for example, for infill, this is our current, there's an existing building on the top that's blue and the bottom one is proposed, a 12 unit building. Under our current open space standards, they have to provide open space equal to the orange shading that you see here, 34% of the lot, plus all the parking on the right hand side. They can't really meet it, they can't meet it unless they do fee and lieu. And so they've been stalled. And so we're proposing to bring it down to 5 to 10% depending on the quality of the open space that they provide. And that seems more reasonable. And here they could still preserve the trees that are there. Here's another development that currently, it hasn't come to P and Z yet, but it probably will be this year, that is proposing 22 units. And this is the open space that they're currently required to provide. We're saying 5 to 15% seems more reasonable. And you can still provide all your trees, both around the site or in the open space. Remember that the tree preservation ordinance you just heard is a canopy approach that deals with the amount above you. And this open space is measuring the amount of open space on the ground, so they don't, don't conflict. In large multifamily, basically we're reducing the percentage a little bit, but making it higher quality so that in sites like this, this is a project in South Asheville, you'd have to do 5 to 20% open space. But if you did this high quality open space on large projects like this, you, in this case, you would have a half acre, basically a little park that would have seating and would really be flat so that it could actually be effective. And again, this is showing all the trees that would, would still be allowed. In subdivisions, we're basically proposing to allow a slightly reduced amount from 20% to 15%. But we're requiring that 40% of, I'm sorry, that the open space needs to be on the frontage, at least 40 feet of frontage, so that you don't get these sort of circuitous paths in the back that are somewhat more hidden and probably less used. And again, they could still fit all the trees on those spaces. For non-residential, so for commercial, we're basically, it's kind of a wash. It's actually a little bit of a reduction. We still think that commercial should have open space, even if it's pretty intense in use because people might want to come out for a lunch break. So this is a grocery store that currently has 15% open space and under our rules would have 5 to 15, depending again on the quality. And trees would still fit either on that open space or throughout the site. You can see here, other cities, you know, for commercial, you know, a lot of them don't require any. We do. I highlighted the 40% for Asheville because currently this is what's broken in our standard that we really need to fix if we're serious about infill. Lastly, as part of this, and this is, I think, one of the most exciting things of this proposal, we're, we're creating an incentive that requires large projects over an acre to basically have to comply with stormwater regulations. If not, they have to preserve 50% of their parcel. They can't develop 50% of their parcels, so they have to maintain 50% open space. But if they choose to meet our open space ordinance, I mean, I'm sorry, our stormwater requirements, then they can use more of their site and they don't have to set aside 50% of the parcel for open space.
Is that for new projects or existing?
For new projects.
New project, okay.
Yeah.
Why would they not, why would they not have to comply in the first place?
So we have a state regulation that says that any reduction in permeability is not required to meet stormwater. So for example, this Kmart site, if you met our current standards and you put in some tree islands, you are going from 100% impervious to maybe 98% impervious. And because of that, you're not required to meet the city's stormwater requirements.
So it's redevelopment?
Redevelopment, right. New redevelopment or new construction.
Who's the design judge that determines whether it's good design or bad design?
Stormwater or stormwater.
No, 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 I mean on the, the open space design.
You mean to meet the 5% benefit?
There's that subjective aspect to this.
Are there objective criteria that you would apply?
We can't, we can't have a subjective zoning requirement. So it's, it's objective and I can, we'll go to the ordinance and I'll show you specifically what our standards are.
Okay.
It's still somewhat vague, but I think arguably better. So this is just pointing out that the open space for stormwater standards. So that's that presentation. And so let me just show you now this. Do you want me to go through these 15 changes that we're proposing?
Yeah.
Super fast.
Okay, so the first one is the purpose, basically adding a language to be more inclusive of all the different ways that open space is effective. We are removing commercial industrial from the, an exemption because it was pointed out that you can build residential on commercial industrial. And that, that sounds fair. We get that sometimes, so we're taking that off. Historic properties, this was, this actually was an exemption in the past. It was just in a different section and worded strangely, so it made sense to just put it in the exemptions. Open space typologies, they wanted us to add, provided that hardscape areas do not exceed more than 50% of the required open space unless permeable, which we didn't have before. So that seems reasonable, right? We're trying to, we're saying you can, you can have a hardscape, but now we're saying up to 50% unless it's permeable. Natural open space, previously we had a cap that streams in riparian areas and for open water could only count as 50% of the open space. And it was asked that we remove that. So if this subdivision is on a river or a creek, that we should just allow them to count all that. We agree that's fine. Public amenities, they asked us to reduce counting wide sidewalks as part of open space. So we removed that. They requested that we, again, only count these hardscapes like plazas and sidewalk cafes up to 50% of the hardscape unless it's permeable. So we agreed to that. Constructed stormwater amenities, previously we had a cap that only 25% of the open space could be counted as constructed stormwater amenities and they requested that we count all of it. So we agreed to that. Power line easements, they asked us to strike that. And we actually had this conversation at P and Z when we presented before and we added, at P and Z, we added, except for high voltage power lines, but going back, they asked us to just wipe it. And so we're, we're taking it out. You can't have open space under power line easements. A small request under maintenance to add and required vegetation, right? So in your open space, you should maintain your plants too and your trees. A request to strike in your dimensions that 50% of the open space shall not exceed a 15% slope. The idea was that if we, if we have fewer dimensional requirements, we give more flexibility to designers. So that makes sense. I think the loss here is that we are allowing now open space to be used that's, that's hillier and won't serve as a function for sociability, for humans to interact. But, but there's another role for public, for open space too, right? Beyond sociability. So you know, that's a balance that you can decide on how you want to go. Contiguity, we added, this is just kind of a general language stating that open spaces should adjoin other open spaces. It's not a requirement, it's just sort of a should language. So it doesn't hold, doesn't really have teeth behind it, but it meets, I think, our intent, which is open spaces should try to be gathered together, make them more effective. should try to be gathered together, make them more effective. There was a request to remove this language that said if the open space is close to a public park, that you can reduce your open space. And Urban Forestry Commission said, well, we shouldn't reduce our standard, we should just, you know, if you're close to a park, you should still provide all the open space that you should provide.
Was that out of the conversation we had at the last time we looked at this, where we talked about how tiny little pockets of open space on small parcels might be better aggregated into larger open spaces shared by those surrounding parcels? Does that have something to do with?
It doesn't. I remember you bringing that up, but this doesn't. This was just a sort of a, I think, more of a philosophical standpoint, that we shouldn't be lowering our bar by requiring more open space. Our thinking here was trying to be flexible for development, especially if you're close to a park, that maybe you don't need to provide as much open space. You know, so it's just different ways of looking at it. But we agree to that. So, prohibitions, we're adding that overhead transmission lines are prohibited. And then, lastly, the fee-in lieu, this was a change from recent state statute or updates to our legal requirements, that fee-in lieu used to be for open space only in subdivisions, and that's not the case anymore. So, open space as part of a multifamily development or other project can take advantage of fee-in lieu. And we just copied some of the specific language from the state statute here that says it's a tax value of the development or subdivision. So, it's, I think, linking the tax value to, if I'm understanding this right, to the proposed value of the project. So, those are the 15 changes that we made based on the UFC's comments.
Okay. I like, this brings up a question, as you're presenting this right after the last presentation about canopy area. Do canopy and open space, can they overlap, or are they separate requirements?
They can overlap. There are separate requirements, but they can overlap.
They can, okay. You can use the same, okay. That's interesting. I do really like that this ordinance includes the scale of the property and the quality of the space. I just, I think that's important in providing some flexibility.
And sorry, I forgot, Tony, to mention, you asked about how do you determine quality? These are the five, only five standards. This used to be a lot longer, but we pared it down significantly. One, at least 70% of the open space must be contiguous, so it's all got to be in one area, pretty much. All the, all required open space shall have an average slope less than 15%, and 75% shall have a slope of less than 5%. The shape shall generally be rectangular, and so we have this, we thought a lot about how you could quantify this, and it's basically that the longest dimension is, can be no longer than 160% of the shortest. So, it's relatively easy for somebody reviewing this to calculate that, but allowing for some amebic shapes or, you know, more organic forms. Residential subdivisions still have to place the open space along the frontage, and that seating is provided. For every 250 square feet, you have to provide one linear foot of seating. And that seating can be, as we're even recommending, a mix of formal seating, like benches with armrests, and informal, so that designers are encouraged to be creative and to, you know, to not make spaces feel so rigid.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
I have a hard time with you removing commercial-industrial from the exceptions under the preface that they can be used for residential. If I want to make a lumberyard or something with outside storage, I don't quite figure out how this open space, I'm fencing the warehouse, so where is this open space going to be of benefit? I think somehow it needs to be that if you're going to utilize, say, a CI-zoned property for residential, then that open space would kick in. But for most commercial-industrial applications, I don't think that's appropriate.
Well, that's an interesting point, and first of all, remember that we have plenty of other zoning districts that are required to meet open space. So, highway business, regional business, a lot of the others that would allow for things like this, that what we were talking about, are required to have open space. So, first of all, your comment probably aligns with those possible zoning districts, but the thinking is that even if you're a commercial zoning district and you have a business that is very intense in its use, that you still should provide some venue for people who work there to come outside for a lunch break. And because we have the standard that allows you to only have 5%, it's really a, really a small amount of open space. So, it doesn't seem like it's onerous. So, that's, you know, we could sort of, I think, potentially look at what you're talking about, but if we do that, then we're moving away from the principle of providing open space for employees.
Well, with that line of reasoning, then industrial shouldn't be exempted.
If you keep that right, keep that line of reasoning to the extreme right, we're trying to balance that a little bit here.
I think when the Urban Forestry Commission pointed out that, or asked about the CI, we sat down and thought about it from staff's perspective, like, what kind of development are we seeing in these CI districts? And we are not seeing industrial. I mean, the trend has been for these properties to be developed for commercial purposes. Just earlier tonight, you saw a school in CI. So, if a property were to come forward with a truly industrial use, they could probably be rezoned to industrial and avoid an open space requirement if that were a concern. So, that's always a possibility. And we're actually, the, probably the biggest, the most common development that we're seeing in CI is multifamily residential.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Sattika at this time?
I'm really curious about the two, the 15% slope one and the stormwater one. Like, I mean, I can kind of see it, and gives me pause. So, I'm just, I...
What's the question about the?
About the change on the constructed stormwater, allowing that?
Oh.
And then, the 15% slope one, both of those.
What's your thought about the constructed stormwater?
Again, this is, seems like forever ago, but it seems like we had the conversation when this came the first time about, you know, whether or not that really should be considered open space. I'm less worried about that one. I mean, the 15% one just seems like, if it's over 15%, like, that becomes really hard to say, yes, it's open, but it's not. It's completely, no, shouldn't say completely, it becomes very difficult to, you know, say that it's usable. I mean, certainly, someone could come in with a multifamily development and say, okay, there's a big parcel out there, it's 15%, we're going to use that, we've got enough room, we can say, we've got, we can meet the 15% square footage requirement, that's our open space, and it's, you know, the whole rest of it.
It's retention basin.
Is building and parking.
But, I mean, what is the intent of open space? Is it breathing room? Is it usable? I mean...
That's why, Brian.
That's what I'm getting at. Like, it's all shoved off in one corner, and the rest of it's just hard, impervious, like, nothingness, and which then, if you think about the tree camp, like, that's exactly what we don't want. We want something that's a little more integrated, I think.
So, a couple of thoughts. One, right, this is trying to balance these conflicting goals that we have of greenery and open space sociability with allowing development. And the purpose even highlights, that highlights these varying qualities, right? So, some of them have to do with stormwater mitigation, wildlife habitat, which doesn't care about slope necessarily.
Yeah.
So, from that perspective, you know, it makes sense to strike that and allow the designers to include steeper slopes for open space. You know, so we're trying to balance that, and we're trying to be sort of generous to come their way, knowing that if somebody wants to take advantage of the open space benefit and go to the reduced amount, then they have to meet that stricter standard for slope. And the similar response for your question about whether we should be accepting all of the constructed stormwater, in this case, you know, somebody made the case, like, shouldn't we be wanting more of like a New Belgians type of development, where you can see the constructed stormwater, and it's a visual part of a project? I think you can make the argument that that is a good thing, and that we should allow for more, more constructed stormwater to count as open space. But if it's done poorly, it might just be a hole, it's mowed, and not something that's going to be attractive. So, again, it's, you know, kind of balancing act, yeah.
What is the 15%? What is the, can you, can you go back to that?
Yeah, so, we used to have a general dimensional standard that said at least half of your open space can't exceed 15% slope.
So, now it can be more than that?
Now, 100% of your open space can be over 15% slope.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. We're in the mountains, man.
All right. And then, if you make it flat, you can then reduce your open space requirement.
Right.
Flat and usable, okay.
Right.
Okay, should we open for public comment? We'll call you back up if you have any more questions. 6:42, we'll go ahead and open for public comments.
Hi, Sharon Summerall again, Urban Forestry Commission and representative on the Technical Review Committee. Urban Forestry Commission Working Group thanks city planner Videla Sattika for working with us. Thank you. On this ordinance amendment, and further thanks city manager Deborah Campbell for her efforts in bringing about this collaboration. Because of new procedures applicable to city boards and commissions brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic, and to avoid violation of the quorum provisions governing board and commission, the Urban Forestry Commission has not had the opportunity to review this version of the open space amendment and to make a recommendation. However, the Urban Forestry Commission Working Group has the following comments. One, the open space amendment does not include language specifically linking it to the Tree Protection Amendment. The relationship between these two ordinance amendments is crucial to the orderly planning and development of open space and tree preservation. Two, the percentage of open space requirement under the proposed amendment has been drastically reduced, which is in conflict with the tree amendment ordinance, and will have a negative impact on the ability to preserve trees on construction sites. Notwithstanding the intent to offer an incentive for meeting stormwater regulations under Section 712.2F and Section 712.2A6, a further incentive for open space reduction should be tied to meeting the tree protection and preservation standards in the Tree Protection Amendment 719.1. The space taken to meet requirements under tree protection and preservation standards in Section 719.1 should be allowed to meet the open space requirements. However, the spatial requirements in the open space amendment are too rigid to meet these standards and adversely impact ability to save trees. Exempting CBD, CBD extension in the River Arts Swarm District from open space requirements is short-sighted. Because the objective of city planning is toward making the city, especially downtown, denser, doesn't mean it has to become less green. But the downtown area is one of the most concentrated heat island areas in the city, resulting in higher-than-normal surface temperatures. The public health impact of this heat island effect could be mitigated with required open space in these exempt districts that also could provide more space for trees. Conclusion, we have consistently maintained that for both of the ordinances before you today to work well, we expect both to complement each other. There is no urgency to get this proposed ordinance amendment pushed through the system. It is a complicated yet important ordinance proposal, and cities should take more time to get it right. The Urban Forestry Commission Working Group can provide more details on our position on the proposed open space amendment, should the commission request it. But thank you.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other folks that would like to make a comment? No? All right, we'll close public comment at 6:45. So, I guess, would, Mr. Sattika, would you mind? I guess the reason this is coming back around was to get the input of the Urban Forest Commission, correct?
That's right.
But it sounds like they didn't provide their, I'm confused.
Well, we, we made 15 comments based upon their input.
Okay.
And, you know, from Sharon's summary, they wanted us to go further, and so they're not supportive.
I see, okay.
Because, because of some of these things. And if I can just respond to a couple of them?
That'd be great, thank you.
So, the question about the failure to include language, to link this to the tree preservation ordinance, they're really separate ordinances, they have separate requirements. We've crafted this so that they're not in competition. You can include the, all the open space, you can put, well, if the open space is big enough, you can put your trees that you need to preserve there, if you can, if it works. But it's difficult, and it seems more reasonable to leave them separate. As far as the percentage reduction, herding trees, that's simply not true. By allowing for you, open space doesn't necessarily preserve trees, right? That's why we're trying to pass a tree preservation ordinance. So, even if you have a 20% open space requirement, you can get rid of all your trees. And so, we're trying to, in all these cases, allow for more effective open space, and we're trying to be flexible. So, in, really, in all the cases, it's coming down a little bit. And we think that's a good balance, especially for the type of city we're trying to move to, if we're basing that, that vision on the city's comprehensive plan, that it's a little bit more urban, more walkable, and allowing more infill, and, and thinking about affordability, right? Requiring more open space just makes it more difficult to get land, and not allowing people to build as much. But we're, we think that this is a sort of a good balance, we're allowing for both. Exempting this criticism that we should not be exempting the CBD, we haven't required open space in the CBD as part of our history for many of the reasons that you brought up during the tree preservation ordinance. And we thought that we should continue that, that tradition, knowing that downtown is where the higher intensity development occurs.
Great, thank you. Do we have further discussion?
I feel so strongly about the CI being removed in an exemption that I'm not going, I'm not in favor of this ordinance.
Okay.
Or wording amendment.
All right, is there anyone that wants to make a motion? Okay, I'll do it. I move to approve the proposed wording amendments to Articles 8 and 11 of the UDO, and find that the proposed amendments are consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and that one, the amendment improves upon open space regulations and removes conflicts that currently inhibit the utilization of recently passed infill housing standards due to some excessive requirements. And two, the amendment balances development requirements in such a way that supports walkable neighborhoods, transit-supported development, by encouraging more efficient land use.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so, it passes 5 to 2. Okay, so it passes five to two. Did you get everyone?
I raised both hands.
I was the no.
And everybody else voted affirmative, so, all right. But again, goes on to City Council for final approval, which...
Chair, before you get to the next...
Yes.
...item, I need to recuse myself for the...
Yes, okay.
Next item on Gudger Street, I worked with the client to work through the Historic Resources Commission.
Okay.
Application for that, so I will...
Do we take a vote on his recusal? Okay, so, all the, can we just make a, do we just take a vote? Okay, so all those in favor of recusing Mr. Archibald based on his prior involvement in the project? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous and we'll see you soon. You can't leave because we have another item on the agenda. Okay, so tonight, there's a couple of rezonings. We have a request to rezone the property located at 23 Cortland Avenue and from Urban Village to residential single-family high density, RS8. The properties, let's see, the owner is Mahan Kalpa Kalsa. How did I do? Trust, and the contact is Joe Archibald, Planner, Coordinating Reviewer, Shannon Tuck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. So the request that's before you today is a straight rezoning, so not a conditional zoning, this is a straight rezoning for three properties located in the Montford neighborhood. The properties are a little bit unusual in that they have frontage collectively, they have frontage on three roads. You have Cortland Avenue, Gudger Street, which is the little curvy street that kind of comes around the eastern side, and then Woodside Place on the lower side. And actually, it's not really frontage on Cortland Avenue, the address for the largest parcel is Cortland, so that's why it's described as Cortland, Gudger, Woodside. Collectively, the three parcels are under half an acre, about 0.4 acres, and are all currently zoned UV, Urban Village, with a tiny little sliver, that northern edge above that blue line on the image to your left is actually zoned RS8. So that largest parcel actually is split zoned, but the very large majority of it is zoned Urban Village. So the request before you is to collectively rezone those properties to RS8 to match the properties that are adjacent to the northeast, excuse me, northeast and south-ish. You can see, I've attempted, and with my very at-home technology that's available to me, that's very crude, I've attempted to kind of show you how the new, you can see the blue zoning line on the image on the left is a little bit difficult to discern because it goes through that red hatching. But if, if approved, the zoning line would change to kind of go along the western edge of, of those three parcels, and all of that would become RS8. You can see from the aerial image for the property that it is currently undeveloped. The petitioner has been before the Historic Resources Commission for a preliminary plat approval, just to make sure that under the historic district, that it's something that can be developed appropriately and consistently with, with those standards. The zoning history on the property is a little bit unusual. Urban Village, this particular property, was part of a collection of 51 parcels back in, I think it was 2007, that was rezoned in, from a variety of zoning designations to Urban Village. And the way that Urban Village zoning works is you, there's a rezoning and a master plan approval. It's, it's a little bit like a conditional zoning in that you rezone for the purpose of realizing this particular master plan. Well, that master plan in 2007 never moved forward, it was approved and the rezoning was enacted, but the plan never got enacted or acted upon. So the properties have just remained in this zone state ever since, but because the master plan is effectively defunct, you can't develop in a manner that's inconsistent with that master plan. So anybody who wants to develop these properties would need to, would more, you know, would need to rezone to something in order, other than Urban Village in order to do so. And you can see the surrounding zoning is RS8. Just to point out too, on the aerial, there is a, it is adjacent to the school, I think it's the Montford North Star Academy now, which is a new, one of Asheville's new middle You can see from, this is a clip from the future land use map, so there is no change needed to the future land use map, it is currently designated as traditional neighborhood and RS8 is one of the zoning districts that's identified as being suitable for the traditional And as far as compatibility is concerned, the RS8 zoning, along with the Montford historic district standards, will allow for new infill development, but will, it will limit it to residential single-family development that will be consistent and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And just to clarify, it's just the largest parcel that's part of the historic district, but because they are contiguous to each other, the, the preliminary plat recombination kind of redraws those property lines and so we kind of look at them sort of collectively. And that concludes my summary, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Representative for the property owner is here, I think would like to address the commission.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll invite the property owner or representative.
Thank you, my name is Tikun Gotshalk, I'm a lawyer here in Asheville. I got involved with this property some years ago because of a title problem and I'm not here to so much talk about the zoning. And just to give you a little more context, which might help your decision in this, when this came before council for the, the Urban Village way back when, the applicant actually didn't own the majority of this property. They had a mistake in their mapping and it's, it's a long story, but basically, the, that developer didn't own the property that they effectively got the, the Urban Village approval for. This is, if you looked at the large, larger image on the GIS, you would notice this is like the tail on the dog, this is like the tip of the tail on the dog. The majority of the Urban Village usage is actually, you know, some distance away, much nearer to the, the entrance to Montford and 240 and so on. That's, that's where the majority of the acreage is. This was sort of a long, long piece that extended to the very tip into the historic district. I don't, I don't believe that, from looking at this title and the history, that this was ever really intended to be used as part of that Urban Village and it was just mistakenly included in some of these deeds that, that the, and maps that the developer put together. My, you know, the owner now, Mr. Kalsa, actually owned the property at the time, the Urban Village, and I think he just wasn't aware of the fact that his, his neighbor was trying to rezone his property, so we would have made no objection to it at the time. So we've resolved the title issue and we're back here trying to get the zoning issue fixed because Urban Village, it just, this property cannot be used in the, in the current zoning designation. And it's a split zoning with Heathering, it's a split zoning in a split historic district. So it's, there's multi-layers, we think this will take care of it. And, you know, I just appreciate your, your time and happy to answer any questions about that.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I'd hate to have your property rezoned out from under you. So, let's see, we'll go ahead and open for public comment at 6:59. If there's any one here that cares to speak. Doesn't look like it, so we'll close public comment at 6:59. Pretty straightforward, any discussion? Mr. Kane?
Did you, did you want me to make a motion?
I do.
I move to approve the rezoning request from Urban Village to residential single-family high-density RS8, thereby assigning a zoning designation that is more compatible with the surrounding properties and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. The rezoning one will, one, assign a zoning designation that is consistent with the future land use designation, two, allow opportunity for compatible infill development, and three, support the development of housing in a locationally efficient area.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously and moves on to City Council. Okay, next up is a city-initiated request to apply a new resource management overlay district to all properties located within the city of Asheville. Corporate Limits, see there, half-page ad. The Planner, Coordinating Reviewer, Shannon Tuck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is an interesting rezoning to have before you now, given that there was a negative recommendation for the tree preservation canopy, or tree canopy preservation ordinance that you've already heard. But let me just give you a little bit of background about this. I think you probably have been briefed on, oops, whoops. Well, the, well, this is not right. Sorry, let me go back here. Sorry, I don't know what happened, this is not, let me just go to the... So the, there is legislation, Asheville and Raleigh have a local act, a, what we call a local act, which is a law, a session law, that was adopted by the General Assembly that gives us some authority to regulate trees and other vegetation in, in resource management districts. That is the language that's used in the law, it says a resource management district. So in order to move forward with the tree canopy preservation ordinance, we needed to establish a resource management district. And we felt like the best way to do that and maintain all of the other goals that, you know, come with all of our other zoning districts is to do a zoning overlay. And we do treat zoning overlays like rezonings, so we do the same kind of notification and advertising. So it's a little bit funny, but here's your exhibit map that we're not used to seeing it be the entire city, but the intent is to apply the tree canopy preservation ordinance to all properties within the city, so the overlay would cover the entire city. And that is it in a nutshell. Both the wording amendment and this rezoning identify a lot of the same goals, it's really about enhancing the tree canopy, mitigating flood loss, improving our assets, our natural assets. And if you're not familiar, the, the city's comprehensive plan has an appendix, I think it's Appendix D, and it's the, what do we call it, Planning for Climate Resilience, it's our climate resiliency plan. And it very specifically seeks to, to reduce our vulnerability and risk due to climate change. And so a lot of what that ordinance attempts to do is, is tied in very much with that plan. So we cite that as part of our comp plan consistency. And that is, that is it. Quick summary, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let me ask you, since the tree canopy did not go forward, should this go forward and maybe wait until either City Council approves it or doesn't approve it, with us coming in and doing the overlay with the possibility that there will be no tree amendment or that it may be in a different form?
Well, now, of course, you all won't be the final decision for this or the wording amendment, so because the Development Services staff intend to move the negative recommendation forward to council and allow them to make a decision about the ordinance, I think we need to do the same thing with the rezoning because we can't enact it if we don't have the zoning in place. So I think we would just move it with a negative recommendation.
I have a question. I applaud the city for focusing on climate resilience and looking at this very carefully. It's a pressing problem, but I do think that it's multi-pronged and it's more than just a tree canopy. I think that density reduces sprawl and reduces carbon emissions from, you know, cars traveling as far. I think that, you know, building, construction, that, that takes a lot of carbon resources to build a building. And so, you know, could you prioritize like lead-type buildings that are more efficient? I mean, there are so many other things I would want to include in some sort of, if we're really going to look at climate change and resilience as a city. So, I mean, I appreciate that canopy is a component of that, I just feel like we're prioritizing this one element and not looking at, at, at that climate resilience holistically, yeah.
I was just gonna ask, Chair, I could comment real briefly on kind of comment about kind of green building type of standards and in the coming months, you all will be seeing a proposed zoning amendment related to the hotel development study that we, that we've been working on. And we're working on a, what's called a public benefits matrix or table where we are trying to incentivize certain green building and energy efficiency standards with the, the hope that if that passes, that public benefits matrix might be able to be applied to not just hotel and use types, but all land use types within the city sometime in the near future.
Okay, and I guess what I'm longing to see is those other components of, of climate resiliency and, and green building balanced with this specific component.
Yeah, and, and those are, those are wonderful goals and I think there's a lot of interest in trying to, to look at that and figure out how best to implement it. Trees are a little bit of a unique thing and we have this special authorization, but only by establishing a resource district. So if we're going to do the trees, the tree protection or the tree preservation, then we need to establish this district. That's how we exercise our authority. So that, it is a critical step. The, the other initiatives may not need this, may or may not need this resource management district, but, but that ordinance does. Okay.
The only thing, establishing the resource management district, I mean, it appears to me, like, there wouldn't be any other things that would necessarily apply to that, to that.
Not, not right now, but it does, it does create a framework for something in the future, whether it be this ordinance or something else. I mean, there, there could be special standards for preservation around repairing areas or water bodies or, you know, that's something that could be looked at in the future, but right now, the only ordinance that would apply under the resource management district is the tree canopy preservation ordinance.
Okay, then you answered what I failed to really ask appropriately. So it could be used to create other resource protection ordinances, for lack of a better phrase.
It's kind of a vessel, it sounds like, to kind of hold the individual and to implement these ordinances.
Right, and because...
But it's specifically about natural resources, so it's not going to work for...
It's not cultural resources, it's not historic resources, it's...
Yeah. I think I put it in the, let's see, do I have it? The title of the, the legislation is an act as to the cities of Asheville and Raleigh concerning tree regulation and to allow them to exercise eminent domain powers for open space. So, okay.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and open for public comment and then we'll ask Ms. Tuck to come back up if we have any further questions. 7:09, public comment.
Okay. Sharon Summerall once again. I didn't know this was coming up because I couldn't find it on the... I didn't know this was coming up because I couldn't find it on the computer, but I want to say that when we found this ordinance, we were absolutely thrilled because no other cities in North Carolina have this other than Asheville and Raleigh. And it was the only thing that we have in order to save our natural resource of one thing, our trees. And we were ecstatic. And when we brought it to city staff and council and said, is there any way that we can work with this to make us help preserve what's so integral to us living here in the mountains and everybody else? They realistically looked at us and said, we'll see. So we hung all our hopes on this that it was gonna make some changes, good changes for us here in the city. So I just want to let you know that we were astounded when we located this because it was done in 1987. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, we're closing public comment at 711. Any discussion or further questions?
I'm, I'm sorry, I have not read that session law, but one thing that concerns me is the way it says, "exercise eminent domain powers for open space." Does that mean that there's a takings? Or that there is something in that law that would allow the city to take a piece of private property?
Well, the law already exists. I mean, there, it's been in place since 1987. So, I mean, we already have some of the authority that, that comes with, with that law.
Does this then apply because you're naming this, this area, the entire city, then that gives you the right of eminent domain within the entire city?
I'm not familiar with that part of the law. And I don't, I don't know that it was, that the law was included. I put a copy of it in your, in your packets. It's not very long.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm looking for that language now. Sometimes eminent domain, so it gives you that option, but that this, as part of approval, that would have to be in the ordinance that gets adopted. So this is the statute that gives Raleigh and Asheville the right to regulate trees and then to allow eminent domain for open space. But we would have to write the ordinance really precisely to state that what we're permitting. So in this case, what's before you right now is just an overlay district, a resource management overlay district with no underlying regulation under it, which again was the tree regulation that was previously before you and was denied here. That, that ordinance did not have anything about eminent domain, exercise of eminent domain power in it. And it would be my opinion that by just passing a resource overlay, you're not, you're not adopting everything that was allowed by this law. Typically, the state will give you the right to do something if your ordinance says that that's what you're gonna do, if that makes sense. So I don't read that in here. And I don't, I did nothing that's in the resource management overlay. Ordinance is talking about that and neither is the, or even the proposed tree regulation.
It's, it's interesting because as I scan the law, I don't even see any reference to eminent domain or open space at all.
It's just right there at the very top, in the kind of, yeah, in the title essentially.
Right, in the title, but nowhere in the content of the law is there anything.
It, it does seem pretty, pretty specific in the statute that it's allowing us to enact and enforce ordinances to regulate the planting, maintenance, removal, replacement, grading, and preservation of trees. And then as Janice mentioned, the ordinance follows this, but doesn't mention anything about the use of eminent domain for this purpose.
In general, in eminent domain, before a city takes eminent domain action, usually under a quick take or eminent domain statutes, they would have to vote to exercise that eminent domain. So you'd have sort of a two-step process. It's not just because you're allowed to do it, council would still have to vote to actually enact it or utilize eminent domain in the case of a tree preservation. It's a case-by-case basis.
That's interesting because under number two in reading that, it talks about enacting and enforcing ordinances to regulate planting, maintenance, et cetera. Then it goes down and says either in A, floodways, or B, reservoir, or C, resource management zoning districts, which we're talking about here, provided that no ordinance shall totally prohibit the removal of trees within these districts. However, the ordinance may provide that any trees removed in the resource management zoning district must be replaced by similar trees planted on the same tract or parcel of land. That seems to not allow the finland that we're talking about in the tree canopy protection.
You're afraid the language is overriding the, the sister ordinance?
That's what it seems to say here, that. Now, if it said you could do it in the same zoning, resource management zoning district, that would allow you to do it. But this says specifically the same tract or parcel.
Well, I know that the, the city attorney's office looked at this. As Ms. Summerall stated, you know, when we discovered that this law existed and there was the request to, to, you know, exercise the authority that's provided under this law, there was some question as to, you know, how it would work. So I know that it's been studied. Unfortunately, we've lost our support staff who would probably best answer that question.
Yeah, I could imagine that. Eric said you tend to be more with development services under that. But I imagine that we looked at it and we didn't see a prohibition of that in this.
And I think there's, you know, I always read these and wonder like, well, what do they mean by similar? And what do they mean by, you know, approximate? Or what do they mean by good design? Or, you know, so they may have felt that there was enough flexibility in that, that they could, that they're comfortable with the tree preservation, tree canopy preservation ordinance.
So I'm probably not gonna vote in favor just because I'm not yet supportive of the tree canopy preservation. I mean, I think it could get to the point where I'm certainly going to support it. So I just, it just feels these go together. And when the, the tree canopy comes back, or if it, if it does come back, then.
I would agree.
I would bundle those together in a sense.
I would read that, that paragraph right there. If, if we create this resource management zone, this overlay, that when somebody comes to develop a piece of property and they clear some portion of that property to put a building and parking and the other things that you have to do in order to develop that property, not only are they gonna have to comply with all of the landscape requirements that are already in the UDO, they're gonna have to restore all the tree, open space, everything. They're gonna have to restore all of the trees that were taken down as part of that development process. That's the way I would interpret that. I'm not in favor of it.
Well, right now, if you did, if it were passed, you would have a zoning, a zone out there that had no regulations attached to it yet, until the tree preservation ordinance is adopted. And then it's not this statute that.
But it's too specific, I don't know.
It's the city's adopted tree regulation. So this would allow.
Why would this not apply?
This gives, this gives the broadest authority. It's really unusual in this climate, maybe because it goes back so far into the 1980s where cities actually were given the ability to do something so stringent. But a city could choose to adopt it or not, or choose to make it less stringent than what the state rule lacks.
Here, I think.
If it's allowing a regulation. But it's what regulation the city adopts is, this would be the rules.
I think here's the key. May versus shall.
May. The ordinance may provide that any trees removed in a resource be replaced with similar trees. Means we don't have to. And our ordinance doesn't require that they all be replaced. It just requires that a percentage either be preserved or added.
Isn't it typical, Ms. Ashley, that like, if, if there's a state law, a city or other jurisdiction can make other laws, as long as it's not more restrictive than state? It can be less, but not.
That's what I was trying to say. Or they, they don't have to do anything with it at all.
Yeah, they, they can follow the state or they can make it less, but they can't go over. I, I mean, I would be in favor of having, I mean, obviously, this needs to happen before the tree canopy. This makes total sense, but again, they're right now kind of linked.
I know, and you want them in sync.
I mean, there is something to say about saying yes to this and having it in place, but if there's nothing there, then it's like, here's your bourbon glass without bourbon.
Well, city council can still vote to, you know, approve the tree preservation ordinance as a forced canopy, as it is. So.
And, and this as well. If they vote for that, then they're likely gonna vote for this, no matter what.
Exactly.
I mean, yeah. For the record, I would be supportive of this because obviously this needs to happen for anything else to follow.
Okay, then.
What time that may come.
Is there anyone who would like to make a motion? Or do we want to discuss further?
I'll make the motion, but again, I need to worry.
Oh, you need some wording. I'm, I don't have it printed.
Right, ready? I move to approve the zoning action to apply a new resource management overlay district and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. The zoning action will, number one, support a plan to preserve and enhance the urban canopy, and, number two, protect land and water assets by applying protection standards more broadly. And three, build climate resilience by reducing risk and vulnerability to flooding, erosion, and land floods.
I second. Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hands. Okay, all those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails four to three.
Okay, so before we adjourn for the evening, I would like to make a little suggestion for, that I would like, I guess it would be to make a motion to put on the agenda for next month. Something I've been thinking about, I just didn't want to spring it on anybody, but we are being asked as a community right now to examine our systemic biases and structural racism, especially in how it applies to city ordinances and boards. And I think we all know that zoning has a pretty long and complicated history. Basically, where it was government-supported displacement exclusion and segregation. And it maybe it behooves us to look at our zoning policies and to see if we've fortified some of our housing discrimination in certain ways, where we apply single-family zoning, certain things like that. We know that highways were built through communities of color that, and we can look at ways to insulate and protect longtime city residents from disruptive effects of gentrification, which does exacerbate racial inequality. And like I mentioned, looking at the single-family zone, it's been one of the, the primary government tools to promote segregation without being explicitly any kind of race-based ordinance. So is, is that something we would just like to have a discussion next month? Allow the public to provide maybe some comments? And are there any suggestions we would like to make as a commission in how we're looking at our, our uniform development ordinance? There's talk of an overhaul at some point? And are there any components that we feel like we could look at from a systemic biased point of view? So all I'm asking is, maybe I might make a motion to add a little conversation to the agenda next month, so.
Sounds like a tough one to get your arms around.
I think so. And that's why I don't think it's appropriate to have that now. It's just, but to maybe just start a dialogue or just, you know, like I said, zoning's got a long history in, in, in. And could, are there any recommendations we want to make or hear from the community about how zoning has affected some of those, those issues? Anyways.
I would like to applaud you for bringing that up. I mean, I think it certainly is something that, certainly when, and I'm gonna use the word when, the UDO gets overhauled, I think it certainly needs to happen. That, that definitely needs to be a big player. And, and even in the language, this came up actually in the city's advancing racial equity week training last week, the term brand offering. So even just language that might be in the UDO, which is perhaps out of date, needs to, needs to change with the times. I, I agree, it's, it's, it's huge. And it just maybe needs to be little chunks. And so perhaps the conversation for next month is what particular chunk.
Right, exactly.
Might we want to look at first? And, and I would like to use this as a segue. I had, had, had sent an email to staff and I would like to perhaps have some discussion about what the makeup of planning and zoning is. I'm sure that's a discussion that city staff is having for all boards and commissions. And I know that planning and zoning is kind of one of those where we don't necessarily see, I don't think that you, we would see the applicants. I know for multimodal, those applicants are brought forth and, you know, we get the chance to look at them and try to create a body that is diverse in all ways.
I think city council generally takes that, I, I don't know. I mean, they have their own.
And I, and I bring that up, you know, just knowing that there are some people that will be terming off, perhaps. I mean, in October.
I'm one of them.
It will be. It's, you know, certainly the end of my first term. So just in a moving forward way. Perhaps, perhaps that's one first discussion.
Yeah, or, you know, there might be, like you said, just maybe we could ask that the language be modified or just taking a look. So anyways, if anyone, if everyone were comfortable, I just wanted to kind of suggest that as an agenda item next month. And I'm having to take a vote. I guess if you're in favor of adding that to our discussion, raise your hand or say aye.
And if you cut it down in small blocks, I don't think we can take.
Oh, yeah.
And then world peace will be another one. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna solve it all. No, it's just, just starting by acknowledging. So anyways, I appreciate that. Thank you, everybody. With that said, our next meeting is next month, as far as we know. August.
We're waiting for confirmation, but our understanding.
We're waiting for confirmation from the city manager's office. But our understanding is that there are certain boards and commissions that are prioritized and so we're going to, because they're necessary either to fulfill certain statutory responsibilities or to keep economic development, you know, moving in this city. So planning and zoning, historic resources, and the Board of Adjustment, we believe, will be meeting every month, whereas other advisory bodies may be meeting every other month.
Okay.
So, but I will let you guys know, but please keep it on your calendar. For now, we do expect that we will be meeting next month. Now, this was a little bit of a trial run for an in-person meeting. There's been some concern from members of the public that in-person, while it achieves certain, certain things that we all desire, but at the same time, it may prevent as much engagement or participation for members of the public as, you know, we hope for. So in the future, I'm not sure if it will be a virtual meeting, if it will be an in-person meeting, or if it may be even a hybrid of the two. That has not been decided. I will let you know as soon as we know more, but.
Great, thank you. Okay.
I have it, it's August 5th is the next commission meeting.
Yes, so, and we, we'll just wait to hear, but it most likely will be here where we can maintain social distancing.
I think there's a good chance it will be because if you're not aware of this, the, the way the remote meeting laws work is the, the, you know, quick legislation that was adopted as a response to the pandemic requires that you wait at least 24 hours for a vote after you do the hearing. So once the hearing closes, we have to wait at least 24 hours before we vote. So that means the vote doesn't actually occur remotely. This is if it's a remote meeting, a virtual meeting. That actually occurs at the next meeting. And then we looked at options for holding a meeting, you know, the next day, 24 hours later, or 48 hours later. But the resources needed to produce a virtual meeting and even a meeting like this are quite high. And when we have so many boards and commissions meeting, we just don't have the resources for it. So meeting in person solves that problem. We can do a vote and it can move forward to council. Council is wrestling with the same problem. So any public hearing, it's not a problem for certain business items, but any public hearing that requires a vote has to wait 24 hours before the vote's done.
So with that, I was just going to mention too, probably on next month's agenda, you should know that 160D was adopted by the legislation on June 19th. That is the reorganization of the development-related statutes. What that means is, to the extent that cities are able to put certain parts of 160D into place, when we're ready to, we can now. They can be in effect now. We have until July of 2021 to get every, all the changes in place. So as you heard tonight, one of the changes that was permitted was to allow open space fee in lieu for any property, not just within subdivisions. So we just went ahead and popped that one in there. And so you voted on that tonight. But I realize you probably need some more information on what 160D is. And so the legal staff will be moving that forward. And we're going to start to see a lot of text amendments aimed at trying to implement those changes. Some that we really want in place as soon as possible. So we'll have some more information on that.
Great. All right. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, we'll see you next time.